I feel like everybody else, this is great to have this driven down there, but we're doing something that we've normally stayed away from. We've taken commercial and turned it into residential, not something we've normally straight away from. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I just, when things happen differently than we've always done, it raises some awareness with me that this is going on. I'm in favor of this, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thanks for your comment. I think there's also, this is just a very specific, there's not many of these types of areas that are commercial, right? I mean, it's like a semi-residential commercial, but to your point, Ron, it's a good point. I mean, there's just residential all around it, it's the perfect place to continue that.
But.
But to your point.
I think, yeah, and I think a lot of those houses now, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think maybe even before I was on the council, when stagecoachers still ran down there, there was, I think everything became commercial down there. And I could be confused about that.
I don't know about that, but, so your point is well served. Realistically, though, this wasn't, you know, there's no opportunity cost here from a commercial standpoint, realistically, in my opinion, but your point is true that this isn't a direction we should be going, you know, en masse. So I'm hopeful that things like this will help the areas in East Broadway that are, you know, more likely to be developed or redeveloped commercially by some of these improvements. So that, again, realistically, wouldn't have ever been commercial, I don't hope that that would have been the case, you know, ever, and, you know, a burden hand is worth two in the bush, and not only, you know, just from progress standpoint, but as an indicator of some other things to come, hopefully, is how I see this.
Anything else on that? Moving on, Resolution 20, next item, Resolution 2020-106, approving an agreement to complete and final plat for Big Creek Valley Plat 2. Who's speaking?
I can address this, Mary, yeah, if you like this, Kathleen.
Yep.
This is the final plat for the second phase of Big Creek Valley, includes 30 single-family lots and one outlet, one large outlot that covers the detention basin, which will be maintained by the homeowners association of Plat 1 and Plat 2. As far as I'm aware, Amy could confirm, but I believe all of the legal documents have been provided, and so we're recommending approval of that. The public improvements themselves are substantially complete, however, there's a couple items on the punch list, including basically related to cleaning out a sewer line that needs to be addressed, so we're not in a position to recommend acceptance of the public improvements at this point in time, which is why there's an agreement to complete that's been signed by the developer. But that allows the final plat to be approved, so that he can sell lots and building permits can get issued before winter sets in.
And Kathleen, is it correct that all the legal documents have been received in our approval and are in order and ready to be approved?
Okay. Any other questions, or I guess any questions for Kathleen? Otherwise, take a motion on it.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Devora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, Resolution 2020-107, approving the final plat for Big Creek Technology Campus Plat 5. Kathleen, do you get the lucky?
Sure. I'll take this one, too. This is essentially a replat of two lots that were previously platted as outlots in Big Creek Technology Campus Plats 3 and, or 2 and 3. They were platted as an outlot because there were some outstanding issues related to wetlands delineation and whether or not a conservation easement would be required. So they were platted as outlots, which meant they were not buildable. However, at this point in time, NAP Properties has had the necessary wetlands delineation report done, and the corps has come back saying there are no jurisdictional wetlands, so no conservation easement is required. So therefore, essentially, we're moving this plat forward, which takes those outlots, turns them into lots. There are no public improvements associated with this, because they were already completed. That's why you don't see a preliminary plat.
And the legal documents? The legal documents on this one have been reviewed and they're acceptable, also.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, P&amp;Z did recommend approval of this at their last meeting as well.
I have questions. If I'm looking at this map right, as small as it is, even pulling it up, isn't that where the waterway, does this include that waterway that's already out there? Is this on part of that ground?
There are some natural woods along the north side of this property. These two lots are on the north side of East Vista Lake, and there are some wooded areas at the north end of the property.
Okay.
But those are not jurisdictional.
All right, that's not the area that I was concerned about, and several neighbors are concerned about. Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Sure, yep.
So my question may be more for Amy, and I hope I know the answer to this, but just to be, to be clear, so going back, there's a lot of things that have happened in this area, and by previously having this listed as unbuildable lots, and understand, well, I don't understand, I'm not an engineer, what they needed to do to get sign off to change that, but there wasn't anything, there wasn't an advantage to the developer, and therefore also a disadvantage to us as a city by having this be unbuildable for this amount of time and switching it now in terms of infrastructure, in terms of effects to the other neighboring properties, but there's no, this isn't an end around in any sense as it relates to the other development in that general area.
Not that I'm aware of from a legal standpoint, Rob. I, you know, obviously, I look at it from the legal documents and the legal standpoint, but I'm not aware of anything.
Okay, and like I said, I hope that was the case, or this would be, obviously, a different discussion, I just am good for identifying more land to be used, I guess, if you see that as a benefit, but I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't an end around on, you know, again, how the, it was one owner, so I didn't figure there was any impacts to how the infrastructure was handled, or anything like that, just wanted to ask to be sure.
Yeah, nothing that I am aware of, and obviously, from the engineering standpoint, Kathleen can speak to that, but nothing that I have been advised about.
Can we talk about the petition and waiver for a five-foot sidewalk on the side of the, of the street? Are we all comfortable with that, understanding that we don't know what's going out there trail-wise, and this may make it tougher down the road to potentially install a trail along the street?
I was gonna bring that up on the next, but it's a good point.
I mean, it's both, it's both, both of them, so I mean, it's, I think if we do it with one, we do it with both. We don't know where the trail is going to be at out there, we don't know what the school is going to do exactly out there. I would hate to, you know, approve a petition and waiver for a five-foot sidewalk and then come down, down the road saying, oh, well, wait, we made a mistake, we actually do need trail on this side of the road, because we don't know yet. You know, I would rather we, we explain and state that we may need a 10-foot trail, or multi-use trail out there, but it could be something as simple as a five-foot sidewalk on these parcels down the road. We just don't know yet, and I think if we make these kind of approvals, we've shot ourselves in the foot, we're gonna have to shoehorn in something.
You read my mind as well, so does Rob. The only thing I thought about was if that goes right in front of the school, you know, they wouldn't want a 10-foot trail right in front of the school, but it could certainly go around. And in the previous owner's case, maybe this is the next one, thinking of, but he never had to put one in, because we didn't set a precedent, or we didn't have, you know, where everybody else was doing it. I think we should go with a 10, and then if we have to scale back, we scale back, but I would hate to then have to go up. It's better just to think about best-case scenario for us, protecting ourselves. In the past, we haven't done a really good job with that, but we are now, more than ever. So I think that's a good idea, Jeff, as well.
Yeah, so you guys hit on, a good catch, you're right, Jeff, it does apply to this one as well as the next one, I was focusing more on that one, so appreciate that. I think we do have to be cognizant of the work, that, again, maybe more for the next one than this one, be respectful of their timeframe while allowing ourselves, because Dave, you're right, like, we don't need another sidewalk to nowhere, if that's not what we need, but we don't want them putting in a sidewalk where a trail is needed, and I feel like it would be tough to make this argument if we were right, weren't right at the precipice of knowing the answer to that question here very soon. So I don't think it's a long delay, and I know they talked about it in the P&amp;Z meeting in terms of the defer, the best way to proceed, and I'm open, functionally, I just want this to, let, give us the last few segments to finish the race, so we can know how it all fits together, and then, while being respectful of when they need their work to be done, because I don't want to penalize them necessarily for being a little bit ahead of us, and that'll be a theme here coming up, too, but there's a little bit of wiggle room on, on what the right answer is, with the whole region, trail connectivity questions, and again, I think we're pretty close to having the answer to.
I agree, those are points that are all well-taken, and in the past, we've had problems when we've waived sidewalks installation, and later on gone back and wanted some connection, not that it'll happen here, or that it happened, but it happened in the past where properties have changed hands, and new owners claim they didn't know anything about it, and balked at putting it in, and finally got to happen, but it has happened. So it's something we definitely need to be cognizant of, and cover the bases, as you guys have said. Thank you.
This will also set the precedent with P&amp;Z as well, to be able to remind them that that's also very important for us, you know, as we move forward, and then they can vet that out a little bit more at their level as well.
And this, Kathleen, and Amy can weigh in on this, your subdivision ordinance doesn't have a requirement for a trail, for any installation of trails, but it does for sidewalks. So part of the reason for putting a petition waiver for sidewalk is that you have the ability to require that, where your subdivision ordinance doesn't require the developer to install a trail.
Right, and that's the reason that it was written for the installation of a sidewalk rather than a trail.
I'm glad you brought that up, Kathleen, that's something we need to look at, our subdivision ordinance, that we may require.
Yeah, we're addressing that in the new one, but this plat is subject to the requirements of your current ordinance.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we move forward on this, to give us some latitude, if needed, to install a 10-foot trail? I mean, is there a cost share at that point between the developers for both this and the next, the next agenda item? So that if we do ultimately need a 10-foot trail, we have the ability to get it out there?
Well, as written right now, it's obviously set up so that they would be, are required to install the sidewalk. I assume that they would be, the developer would be willing to revise that agreement to specify that they'll either pay for the cost of that, or they would cost share for their proportionate share of the installation of a trail, or they would install the sidewalk. I've not had that discussion with their attorney, but they've obviously been good to work with, and I assume that they would be willing to do that.
Okay.
So is that, does that look like making a motion to approve the resident object to staff's ability to handle the installation of the sidewalk?
Yeah, in order to keep things, that would be my suggestion, that you go ahead and approve the resolution with the understanding that the agreement would be amended to include, or to specify that in the event that you decide that you want a trail rather than a sidewalk, that the developer would pay their proportionate share of that sidewalk. I guess I'd ask Tom, or whomever's available on behalf of the developer, to just confirm that, but that would be a way to keep things moving at this point.
Yeah, Kathleen, how have you discussed this with Stuart so far? Or Amy?
And, Tom, I have not had, I did not, I did not know that this was going to be an issue, so I did not actually have that discussion with Stuart. I mean, I just prepared the agreement, and Stuart approved the agreement for the installation of the sidewalk itself. So, you know, the other thing we could do would be to just move that down the line to our next meeting for approval, but, you know, or the council could approve, subject to us, subject to the negotiation of a sidewalk agreement to include the, this trail contribution rather than installation of the sidewalk.
Right, yeah, Stuart couldn't be on the call tonight, I'm sorry about that.
That's right.
So, when's your next meeting?
It would be on, let's see, October 12. October 12, yep.
October 12, okay. I mean, in general, I'm following the conversation, and I want to agree to it, but Stuart's been front and center on this more than I have, so I don't want to speak out of turn, is my only concern, so I'd be comfortable if we postpone this until October 12.
Do we have a motion on the floor already, Jenny? We haven't even, don't have a motion?
No.
Okay. Let's just, then let's just have a motion to defer any action on this item till that next meeting. So if someone would make that motion, that would be the appropriate way to handle it.
I mostly defer to Resolution 2020.
Can we, I can try to get a hold of Stuart here quick, can we swing back to this item a little later in the meeting here?
Yeah, we could put it at the end of our, we'll just move it down to item after item L.
Okay.
We have plenty more to do.
I'm gonna bug out here, and I'll try to call Stuart and get back on.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, so we'll come back to that one.
No harm in jumping the gun on me pushing there.
What's that?
Dave made half of the motion, so I didn't know.
I take it back.
We want it, do you want it, one in the same way, or are those people on the phone?
Emily's on the phone for the next one.
Yeah. Amy, or does it matter, moving on to this next one?
Go ahead and go on to Resolution 2020-108.
Okay, all right. So next item, Resolution 2020-108, approving Lakes Early Learning Center Site Plan.
Hi, this is Felman. The Lakes Early Learning Center is Felman, and the site plan that we submitted, we worked with Eric Thompson at Fox Engineering and with Kevin Barber at Hala Architecture, and we are looking to keep the existing building of 3,200 square feet and do an addition to the building of 4,490 square feet, so putting us under 7,700 square feet, and then we would have a 36 square foot playground fenced in. This building would allow us to provide care for approximately 118 children, and with all of the growth that Polk City has seen over the last 10 years, nearly doubling in size, an additional childcare option would be very much needed and appreciated by the young families in the community. So we found that this is a prime location, all the development going in, including the elementary school. Did request a waiver for the 10-foot trail due to uncertainties regarding where trails will be going, so that's something we would like to hopefully hold off on doing until there's more clarity regarding whether it would be a sidewalk or a trail that would go in.
I'll echo the same thing, I think this is a great, this is a great endeavor that you guys are going after, and I think it's a nice, a nice addition to the city. I didn't see anything within the packet that really would deter me from not approving this. You just want to make sure that we have an understanding that, since we don't know where trails are going out there just yet, I would prefer, like we did with the last item, to give the city and the landowners out here the ability to potentially construct a 10-foot trail. Otherwise, it would, you know, be knocked down to a standard five-foot trail.
This, Kathleen, there is a petition waiver already on file for this property for the installation of a 10-foot trail. That's already been recorded, runs with the property, so that document is in place. So it's, at this point, it would just be whether, it's up to the city council in terms of when to determine that the trail needs to be paved.
Gotcha, thank you.
Eric Thompson with Fox Engineering, I think you guys are all pointing out critical points, not to beat a dead horse, I think Dave made a great point. I wouldn't want to see you guys put in a five-foot sidewalk and then later come back and request that to be a 10-foot. I think that would cause maintenance issues and tripping hazard of joints and things like that. So, again, we're just kind of requesting that the waiver in place continue, and then at whatever point it's decided, if it's a five or a 10-foot, that be put in.
That's fair, and Emily, want to thank you for, this is gonna be a great addition to the city. I think probably Chelsea can attest to the fact that it's not easy to find, right now in the city, find childcare, as being a recent mover, resident, and I think this looks fantastic. If there's any reason why I has to have more kids, this might be one of them, but I'm too old now, so, but thank you for, thank you for this, this could be a great opportunity for us, and for you, for everybody.
We're excited to be a part of the community, we live within the school district, we actually live in Polk City, we're just a house to the north, but I have experience, and this is something I've wanted to do, so what a perfect opportunity with all the growth, and to keep it local within our school district and community.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's great to hear, really excited to have you, I can't think of a business more likely to succeed than childcare, for all the reasons that Dave outlined. In fact, I was a little bit trying to, I'm glad that we got the, I must have messed up the sidewalk waiver on this one and the last one, because I was a little bit nervous about doing anything that could be perceived as delaying something like this coming in, so, yeah, and I think this is another one of those cases where this would be the headline in a normal meeting, and, but don't want to in any way downplay the significance of this, a place for, what did he say, 150 kids, something like that?
It'll be 118 kids to start with, and then I would like to potentially consider a second addition in the future, once we would be at capacity and, you know, have a good flow going, and depending on the need, then the lot is large enough, I think there'd be options to potentially add on, you know, five for 10 years down the road when there'd be the need.
Emily, this is Dave, what is your estimated completion, kind of your plan as far as opening full-fledged offering positions for the children?
Yeah, so if it's feasible to get footings poured before the ground would freeze, that would be ideal for us to get to that point. There's obviously steps that need to be taken, so, kind of depending on where we would happen to look that, ideally sometime like late spring or early summer. If we have to wait to pour footings, we'd probably be looking about a year from now, is my understanding from our contractor.
Great, thank you. Oftentimes have discussions with people looking for daycare, and so it's always good to know kind of what's coming, so thank you.
Yeah, we haven't officially announced anything, I know word has started getting out, you know, we have family and friends, we're from this area, so word has started to get out, but we haven't officially announced anything, because we wanted to get through this process of getting our site plan approved, building permit, and get a little better timeline before we make any official announcement.
Well, I'll apologize then, because I talked to 20 people this weekend, so I jumped to go.
That is okay, I'm all right with it being told, we just haven't come out full force and put out there our website and social media and stuff yet.
And while I won't go as far as Dave to say that this is another, this would be a reason that we could potentially have kids again, I will say that I'm excited for you coming to town, and I've been really excited since hearing about it, but I do think the other thing that's important is the businesses that are located out there are not leaving Polk City, they're relocating, so we're gaining another business while the other businesses that are located, that are current building are relocating, so, but yeah, very excited to have you come into town, and really excited to see you get open. Who's gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-108.
Say it.
Roll call, please.
Devora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, approved property purchase agreement with NAP Properties for 57 acres in the amount of $800,000. Chelsea, do you want to say much more?
I'm just going to touch base on a couple of things regarding the proposed agreement in your packet for this evening. We are still working out Exhibit A in that agreement. We do have a concept, however, NAP has not started surveying or plating, so we should have a legal description to add later on. But, very exciting opportunity that the city's been working on for quite some time. Property purchase in the amount of $800,000, and will be utilizing general fund cash to pay for that purchase. That's all I have.
I love this, can't wait to begin the planning process, and I know that Jason is chomping at the bit, and we have plans to start that process already, which is awesome, which will be coming up here pretty soon, but I think this is an opportunity that we've been really wanting for a long time, ever since I've been on the council, felt like we needed just something that we can get some acres from, and this happens to be it, so I'm excited for it. I want to thank NAP Properties, Chelsea, the staff, obviously we have a lawyer on it, so it's not approved quite yet, but I think it's exciting to have this as a foundation to build upon moving forward.
I agree, and I'd like, I'd like to thank everybody that worked to make this finally happen, I know that you and I, Dave, a long time ago, talked about making this happen, Rob and I have had discussions about it, and now it's finally gonna come to fruitation, and I think that's fantastic, it's something that sort of needed, and I think that we also maybe need to congratulate ourselves a little bit for being in a place that we can make this purchase at this time. So, I mean, just a good feeling all around, thank you.
Yeah, so I totally agree, both you guys, so referenced other big things that got pushed down, you know, the headline, this is the headline, in my opinion, I don't think that there's any way to not, you know, just be ecstatic, close to 60 acres, next to school, next to development. Close to sixty acres, next to school, next to development. You know, we, so much of what happened, has happened here has been, you know, it's been good, but it's just not been flat land where we could put something like this. And Ron, you're right, the fact that we were in a, in a position to do it the, the way that we are using reserve funds. I know we've had a lot of discussions about that, but it is, you know, after the bond issues that included different things and I probably shouldn't even bring that up, you know, something that we're actually getting traction on with. This is, you know, probably as, as foundation as seismic as, as anything that's happened since I've been on the council. I know it's been a lot of work, so I want to thank staff and all the people that are involved. And just something that, and I want to briefly, as we turn the corner, because it's gonna, it's gonna shift, I think, and there's gonna be some discussions on how and when and, and what a lot of this stuff is. But it wasn't too long ago that this, something like this was a pipe dream, quite honestly. And so I don't want to in any way diminish the fact of how big of a deal this is. Not just because I have kids, but you know, seeing the other family, you know, typical families that are moving here. Something that we can have to call our own, that the kids can have a home complex to use that they've observed for quite some time and a few, maybe close to a generation or two that hasn't been able to use. But glad that we're to a spot where, where now that's no longer gonna be true. And, and I just, this is, this is really cool to, to finally get out there and, and I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, I, and I think there's, there's two things out there that are happening that are really monumental in Polk City. And one is that school coming out there. And I know Jason understands as well as I do that, that what a big deal that is. I don't know if everybody else does. And Jason, I know will be very humble about it because he's been a big part of it and made it hap, and helped make it happen. So that along with this sports complex going out there are two very, very big things in Polk City. And it's, it's really appreciated, even from somebody who's even getting too old to have grandkids. So thank you, everybody that's worked so hard on this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase agreement.
Second. Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, approve regional park master plan, RFP.
All right, Mayor, this is Jason. I'll touch base on this with the exciting news of E there. Yeah, a long process ahead of us, but I would like to get the, the process rolling of getting an RFP out, starting to get proposals in. We have an amazing opportunity in front of us now to build just a regional recreation and sports destination. This is very exciting and I feel like going through the RFP process is, it's gonna be beneficial to any future complex or development out there. It will be for me and my department to start establishing relationships with some firms and starting to get to know one another. But yeah, it's a long process, but I'd like to get the ball rolling as soon as we can.
This dovetails off the last thing, but Jason, I'm really excited for you especially. What a great year to kick this off when everything's been shut down for COVID. And, you know, it's a tough year to start as the park and rec director and then to get something as exciting as this. So I'm, I'm pretty excited for you to get going on this. And I'll make a motion.
If I could make one more comment. So I want to back up just a little bit to some meetings. It's not been a year ago, but Rob, you're really spearheaded, so we can now look, we can play armchair quarterback here and say, you know, we, for the, for the, it is positive for the rec director, right? So if we did not have a rec director right now, we didn't know this at the time, that we were gonna get fifty-seven acres to be able to start planning around. But if we didn't have Jason on board right now, this would be a little more difficult for us to really digest. And now that we can allow Jason to do what he does best and we have that position in place, so I just wanted to thank Rob for the foresight, even as blindly, not blindly, but you know what I'm saying? We didn't know this was gonna happen. So everything has come into place and I just want to thank that support because I was heavily supportive on that as well, with Rob's help. So it's exciting, but I didn't want that to go unnoticed. And with that, I will second.
Well, I know we're, we're to a vote, but I appreciate that backhanded as it may be. But I, it was everybody working on it, but I, I think that's a good point that having Jason here because this, you know, we are, we want to get, we have to get this right in terms of, of what the input from, from these firms will be. But we also have to work with what the school's doing, what NAP is doing out there. So I think you're, you're right in having somebody like Jason to, to spearhead that. Now that I'm putting any pressure on you, but it, it is nice that, you know, in a screwy year like this with all the other things that, that have been shut down, that, that this, that we have Jason to, to lead the, lead the charge here.
Did I get a, Dave, you second in that? Oh, sorry, Ron, go ahead. Okay.
I was just gonna say it, it really makes sense now to, to, to have a master park plan in place now that we're gonna have some, someplace to implement all of these things we've always talked about. So again, everybody's hard work. Thank you. I'm ready to vote now.
Okay, perfect. Jenny.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading and waive the third reading of ordinance twenty-two thousand thirteen hundred on the vacation of a fifty-foot buffer easement and twenty-foot surface water easement in Big Creek Technology Campus, Platte Three. Who's speaking to that? Anybody? Are we just gonna take a motion and go?
I mean, this Kathleen, I could just like, you've, you've already went through the first reading. These are two easements that are on a lot in Platte Three that will actually be absorbed into the school's lot in Big Creek Campus, Platte Four. And so they won't be needed and in fact would be an impediment to what their school is proposing.
Perfect. Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two thousand dash thirteen hundred.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Big Creek Technology Campus, Platte Four. First item, resolution twenty-two thousand dash one-ten, approving the preliminary plat.
Kathleen? I guess, I, yeah, I can speak to this if there's no one from NAP Properties to speak to it. This is a two-lot plat located on the south side of East Vista Lake Avenue. And then it extends all the way west to North Third Street. One of the, lot number one is intended to be sold to the school for a school site. And then the outlot Z is set aside for future development with the potential that it'll be bought by the school as well. But again, it's, it's an outlot for future development and no development plans at this point in time. The plat does include a short extension of East Vista Lake Avenue and the utilities along there and an installation of a temporary turnaround at the east end of East Vista Lake. Those improvements, it's a little bit different than a typical plat in that the improvements are not yet constructed. So the city would be asking for a subdivision bond in conjunction with the final plat. The construction drawings are also on the agenda. Those have been reviewed and are in substantial conformance to the city's codes, so that we would be recommending approval of those as well prior to final plat approval.
And if you choose to, you can approve items H-one, two, and three all in one motion.
Okay.
Now, this I think is what I was referring to earlier, my confusion. This is, this is more of a concern because that, looking at the map where it says R-two there, that's about where that water all flows behind the people on East Madison. So I hope that this isn't gonna change that, change that water flow in any way. Over the years, we've had lots of problems there. It used to, we had to spend some money, oh shoot, twenty, twenty-five years ago to, because water was actually backing up and flowing over the top of Third Street, Sholaw Drive as well, right there where that water comes out. So this, this is something we have to be very careful of.
Right. The plat itself is only, will be requiring detention with the, with the site plans. So it'll be, this, that will be an important issue as we do, look at the school site. The street, the only improvements that are going in are the street. The storm sewers on the street will connect to the existing storm sewers in East Vista Lake and actually run down East Vista Lake Avenue. So this plat in and of itself won't change anything. If anything, it'll, it'll take some of the water due west on East Vista Lake. However, the school will be required to provide full detention and the outlet will be restricted based on the size of the culvert that is just north there on East Madison. I'll say at the, about one lot in from Third Street. So we have, we have made the school's engineer aware that they need to restrict flows more than what's required by ordinance based on that over restriction. So that they, the school and their engineer are, are aware of that.
Okay, okay.
That, that will come in front of you at the school site plan, no, Ron.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
So no reasons not to approve all three, Kathleen, from your professional opinion?
Not, not for my, I don't have any problem with that. We segregate them in part because I was out of town. So in the essence of not knowing how things were gonna wrap up, it got segregated into three different resolutions. But Amy has been involved with dealing with the legal documents since that, in that interim. So as long as the, so the attorney's happy with it, I'm, we have no issue in it from our end.
Have we gotten any more of a, a timeline at all from the school? I mean, I know we're early, you know, rezonings that I haven't technically done yet, but when they'll start the moving dirt or, you know, any of that yet?
They have submitted their site plan for review. I anticipate their site plan would be going to P and Z at their meeting in October. So, and they, they understand, they, it's possible that around that time that they'll be getting, asking for a grading permit. At this point in time, until plat, this plat four that's in front of you at this point, they haven't actually closed on the property as yet. So they need approval of the final plat so that they can set a closing date and actually transfer title on the real estate. So this kind of is a first step that allows the, the school to actually formally purchase the land.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. I mean, and that's, we're not there yet. I just, all of the things we discussed with the, with the daycare are applicable to, you know, at a grander scale to what the school's doing. So if they can do work while the weather is allowing it, I'm just more curiosity on that than anything else.
Yeah, they, and because the school's site plan, the way it's laid out, the school's frontage, half of the street is paved and it was paved with, with Platte Three. And then the other half will, will be paved to Platte Four. So they do have hard surface access to their site before the street, you know, improvements are a hundred percent complete. Just, just by virtue of the fact that they're buying that one vacant lot in Platte Three as a part of their site.
With that, motion to approve Big Creek Technology Campus, Platte Four, resolution twenty-two thousand one-ten, twenty-two thousand one-eleven, and twenty-two thousand one-twelve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments tying all these together? Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, award facilities need, facility needs assessment contract to Shive Hattery for an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Chelsea?
The council approved, going out for RFP for a facility needs assessment in July. We received five proposals from five different architect firms. And we had a process where a selection committee interviewed four of those five proposals and ranked them. And the selection committee is recommending Shive Hattery for an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And Michael Lewis is on the call tonight with Shive. Michael, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything really quickly.
Well, real quickly, good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to work with the city. We're very excited about doing this needs assessment for you and we hope it works out in our favor and for you. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Yeah, as somebody who sat through a lot of the interviews and Mandy as well as, and, and the staff members that all did, it was a well-put-together process. All of the firms that presented did an outstanding job and really looking forward to seeing what Shive brings to the table. I'm very excited to get going on this project personally. And Chelsea, thanks for organizing all this. I know this was a lot of work specifically, since we weren't able to meet in person on, on this too, so.
Thank you. And just one other quick point, we're, we're ready to begin right away. So Chelsea, I know you had asked for us to draft a contract and my project manager has that ready for you. It's based on what we gave you in the proposal, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, we had great, great firms and excited to get going on this. So I think it'll be a great thing to get moving forward on.
You want to make that motion, Mandy?
Are we making a motion or are we just simply awarding?
I think you need to make a motion. I will, I will make a motion.
Second. Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, our next item, first reading ordinance twenty-two thousand sixteen hundred, stop and no parking. Chief, is that on you?
I'll probably talk about that.
Oh, okay.
These are stop and no parking zones that we laid out for Creek US Estates, Platte One, and Big Creek Valley, Platte Two. So really, we, this is the same thing that you've seen. We took into effect CBUs, fire hydrants, flow of traffic, all that stuff that we normally do. But these two are laid out in, in ordinance form for you to approve tonight.
Anybody want to make a motion? So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any reason not to have an option to waive the third at the next meeting when we have the second?
I can add it.
Check. Perfect. Let's do that. Next item, second reading of ordinance twenty-two thousand fifteen hundred, rezoning thirty-one point eight acres located in the vicinity of twenty-two East Vista Lake. From M-one, C, M-one, C-two, R-two, and R-three to R-one, single family. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Next item, approve Snyder Engineering's invoice, July 2020 invoice in the amount of $38,189.50. Take a motion, please.
Unmoved.
Back up.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Upstand.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, moving back to C, Resolution 2020-107. Tom, are you back on the call? Oh, you are.
Yeah, back on the call here. Yeah, we, we're in agreement, you know, the obligation is for a five-foot sidewalk. I just want to make sure Stuart, this is something we're, an obligation we're giving to the buyer of the lot, so they're expecting petition waiver. We didn't want to obligate them for a 10-foot trail, but we would agree to a five-foot sidewalk.
And we can sure amend, I think we have the agreement written so that they'd install it right now, so we can just, if, Tom, is Stuart okay with us just amending that agreement then to say either or the installation by the property owner or payment in lieu for the five-foot sidewalk if the city decides to install the trail?
Yes.
Okay. So with, we'll make sure that that gets amended before documents are recorded. My recommendation would be, from a legal standpoint, I think we're okay with proceeding.
Okay. As long as you're okay with it.
Do we, well.
Your motion. You could make your motion to approve subject to the amendment to that agreement to provide that it will be either an installation by the property owner or payment in lieu for the five-foot sidewalk.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Second. Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Last item, reports and particulars. Anybody have anything to add for the good of the cause tonight?
I have one thing, Mayor Morse.
Okay.
We've been getting some questions regarding trick-or-treating and I would just like to put this out there that the council does have a standing document to have trick-or-treating on October 30th. I have not heard from any of the council members that they would like to discuss that topic, so therefore I think the city still plans to have trick-or-treating this year. With that being said, we'd like to put out some common sense precautions that people should take while trick-or-treating and trying to maintain social distancing. And I will try to get something drafted up this week to go out to the public in some sort of like press release. But if you guys are okay with that, I, I think trick-or-treating is on.
Good idea. I like it, yep.
That is all I have this evening.
Well, thank you and thank you for the, those decisions. I think that's excellent. My thoughts were, we can't force anybody to trick-or-treat. We can't tell anybody they can't trick-or-treat. We can just, just give guidelines and we can't force people to give out candy. In the past now, we have had, and one of the emails mentioned it, trunk-or-treat down on the square, but it was sponsored by somebody other than the city. I can't remember if it was PTA or who did it, and I don't know if there's any plans for that this year or not, but.
I do not know, but I, I can get, I can ask and get back to you.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter. That's just, I just wanted to share my thoughts on it. I know that for years, the biggest thing was what night were we going to do it? So we, I thought we had that Halloween all, all corralled, but now I find out what, I don't know where that came from. Are, are there cities that are canceling it?
There are, yes. There are some cities that are not, not allowing trick-or-treating or not promoting it. So yes.
Well, I, I, I just think we should do the latter, just not promote it. It's there. If people want to go, fine. If people want to give out candy, fine. Those are my thoughts.
Ron, I told Chelsea when we spoke about this that you were probably one of the only ones left that remember those old fights about what night trick-or-treat.
Can't do it on Friday night because it interferes with game night. Can't do it on Wednesday night because it interferes with church.
We change it every year.
Most controversial topic every year, man, it was all.
Yeah.
All right, who else has something?
I just want to say what a productive meeting has been. Excuse me, Rob, if I jumped on you, I'm, I'm sorry. This is a productive meeting and some very exciting things happened tonight and once again, I'm proud to be a part of it.
Yeah, I agree with that. There was a lot. And a couple of things that we haven't talked about that I wanted to bring up, so Chelsea's been with us for a year now. And I told her at some point, I'd like her candor response on what the toll was of that year, it's probably 20 or 25, I don't know, but you know, in all seriousness, you've done an outstanding job. You've been a great addition. It's been a lot of fun getting to know you and again, everything that has been heaped on your plate, which has been a lot and continues, you, you've absolutely done an outstanding job with, so I wanted to acknowledge you and appreciate all the great work that you've done this year and where we're at going forward. Another thing that I want, I wanted to give Mike a little plug too, so with the garbage pickup on Friday, you know, similar to everything else that we've talked about, there were, I shouldn't say a lot, but there, there were some communities that did that in the spring and saw it as an opportunity to save some money and not do it in the fall and appreciate the staff and Mike, you in particular, that we didn't take the easy route. I know a lot of folks appreciated that. I know we put out some junk. At some point, we're going to put out some junk that actually somebody else thinks is not junk. Most of our stuff makes it through Friday night from the people going around and gets picked up on Saturday, but that is a significant cost. I was going to save a dollar figure, around $30,000, something like that, Mike, probably way off.
Well, I apologize because I didn't know this at the time, but part of our contract with MWA includes one cleanup day. So it, yes, used to cost $20,000 to $30,000 a year and now it does not cost that.
Best of both worlds. The point notwithstanding on the cost. What was that? I mean, it is work for, for everybody to, to decide to do it, to publicize it, to all those things, so even better that doesn't cost us money and you did, I think, mention that when we were switching that contract now that you bring it up again, but nonetheless, again, it's, it's something that I think was a good thing to do and appreciated by a lot of people, so yeah, those are the two additional things I wanted to bring up.
Anybody else?
Real quick, just want to give, since you already said something to Mike, to police and fire for their reporting, continued reporting and the, the numbers and dialogue around how busy they are and it supports. Another one of the pieces that Chelsea has been, has been, you know, responsible for putting together and which is a great staffing plan and I believe that, Jim, you said you had the busiest month ever last month, which is 101 calls, was it? Yeah, so and then along with what Jeremy puts together, I mean, that really frames out what everybody's doing and supports the cause, so I appreciate both of your efforts you put together in those and doesn't go unnoticed on my side and I'm sure others as well.
And I'll say, I didn't say a lot throughout the meeting because I do think, you know, kind of the point has been made, but if we gave every item the attention it really deserves tonight, we would have been here all night. You know, we have some really monumental things that have been happening. And it's exciting. I mean, just think about, we had something for the school, buying a sports complex, a staffing plan, a daycare, you know, planned facility needs assessments. I mean, yeah, when you stop and think what was on our agenda tonight alone, and I know there's been a ton of work leading up to it, but you know, this is a pretty exciting night to have all these things on our agenda, be moving forward, be in a position to do a lot of these things, have, you know, individuals in town working on redevelopment, to have good partners as we move forward with these projects. So I know that, you know, this is the tip of the iceberg on the work that's begun on a lot of these things, but it's very exciting to be in this position and moving forward on all these things, so thanks, everybody, and look forward to lots more discussions as we move ahead.
Yeah, this is Jason. I do just, I'd like to restate my excitement for the stuff that really pertained to me tonight. You know, when I came up here in February to apply for this position, had somebody told me I'd get a chance to start planning a big regional destination, I would have said you're crazy, so yeah, 2020, finally, something good. So yes, kudos, everybody. I'm very excited to kind of be the guy that gets to help make it happen, but kudos to everybody that's been on the backside and years in the making.
Anybody have anything else? I think with that, I would take a motion to go into closed session under Code of Iowa, Chapter 21, official meetings open to public, Section 5, closed session to discuss this purchase of sale of property.
Before I make that motion, I'd just like to tag on with, Chelsea has done very well staying true to herself. I remember in her interview that she said she was a person who liked to check things off. And she was definitely getting that done, so thank you, Chelsea. And now I will make a motion to go into closed session.
You're here. Second.
Roll call please.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Give a couple of minutes here to clean the lines and we'll jump into this.